Well, I think I was late, so you can forgive me. I did have something, a plumbing leak in my building. The plumber was there by himself helping me out. God will bless him because let me tell you, I don't want that done, so. I'm sorry to be late. We'll go ahead and open our meeting as we always do with prayer. Mr. Smith, could I pick up on you? Voice our prayer, and then we'll let council and Phil Smith and Mason play.
Family Father, we thank you for everybody who is here this evening, council, members of the audience. We ask you to bless the council as they make decisions for the city of Clinton. As this is your son saying due to Christ's name.
Thanks, my goodness, Father. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a clear reason and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. I'm sure I'm doing my job. We'll open up the regular meeting of the hospital authority and consider the, and consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Have one action item, this will be repetitive through most of the different agendas, consider supplemental budget for Clinton Hospital Authority. Steve, you want, I know we had this in budget meeting, discussed it for those who were here tonight.
Yeah, I want to introduce some treasurer, City Treasurer, Lancher, she's going to walk you through a number of these tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt.
My little warm alarm ring.
These are cleanup type issues at our end of year, getting closer to end of fiscal year. This one in the hospital authority pertains to us using part of those hospital dollars that were on hand whenever the hospital was leased, not part of the lease, but part of the dollars that were on hand at the time, to pay off that 2002 revenue bond issue. We used a little bit of that to do that. This was to clean up the appropriation, so that transfer out will be covered currently.
And at risk of speaking when I shouldn't speak, this is part of the review that I think Steve and you and others involved in did, not sure we didn't have anything hanging out there at interest rates that would be.
Right, right. We were able to save a little bit of interest by doing this. We aren't making any money on our CDs, so it paid off this bond issue a little bit early.
Any questions from council regarding this particular action item? Questions from anyone in the audience regarding this particular action item? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve this cleanup authorization.
Make the motion and approve this item.
Second.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. City managers report for the hospital authority.
I have none of this, Gordon.
Any questions or comments for the city manager related to this authority from the council? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this authority? This is an opportunity under the hospital authority to ask a question related to it. We will have a section later on into the city of Clinton that you'll have a general question, opportunity to ask questions of the council. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting with Clinton Hospital Authority.
I'm going to go first. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes, moving on to the public works authority. We'll go ahead and open it up, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Once again, we have an action item, supplemental budget for Clinton Public Works Authority, and we'll skip straight to Dever.
Just skip him. This one has multiple issues involved. Part of the, of course, if you look at that item, the very first one being, we are appropriating more of our water revenues as they come in at a higher rate due to our rate increases, and using that to cover the cost of our excess purchases from FOSS. That's part of the items. Sales tax transfers in and out, those are required to meet our bonding, it's part of the bond requirements, because part of that sales taxes pledge to meet those public works bond issue, security collateral items. So we transfer that sales tax in and back out. We retain a small portion of that in the water to pay for a portion of the water line project that was done on one of the bond issues several years ago. This is just that the sales taxes come in at a higher rate than we estimated it would, and so we're having to cover those sales tax transfers in and out. That's what the sales tax portion is. The fund balance, I'm using a little bit of the fund balance that was already in public works authority that was not appropriated at the time the original budget was done, and I'm appropriating some of that to cover the cost of the improvements and repairs we're having to make at the water treatment plant due to the chlorine incident we have. We have not received insurance funds from that. That's still being looked at, so I needed to appropriate some of that to cover that project. And then the whole portion, those 2010 education bonds, I really had to figure that part out because those bonds are a little bit different. This is to cover all the times that we had, whenever the 2010 bond issue was done, to get it actually appropriated on our books to, for what we've been doing, needing those requirements to make those bond payments. We get money that comes in, sort of the Build America Bonds, federal interest subsidy from the government to help pay for that. That's part of that bond issue. So I had to really sit down and figure that out. That was something we needed to look at. But that is what all this is covering in the public works authority.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Are the repairs done now at the water plant for that?
No.
They're not?
No. Our insurance company is still, I believe today we just received notification that we have an attorney working on our side, looking into matter against Altive, the chemical company that their cylinder is on the leak.
So you're waiting for the, to hear from them before we continue? Is that what?
Well, I'll just say this, is that we continue to make improvements. We will get the facility up online. What he's talking about is, as regarding the insurance, insurance will cover this. We also believe that Altive is responsible, and we're still dealing with that situation with OMA. And I think that's probably as much as we can say at this point.
Right. That probably is one of those that we need to let run its course before we... Any other questions or comments relating to this public works authority supplemental budget appropriation? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this particular action item? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve this particular budget amendment. Come on.
Second. Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. City managers report for the Clinton Public Works Authority.
Well, council, we talked a little bit about this in the budget session last week. We'll be bringing you some, some recommendations and reviews, part of the water rates as we continue to look at FOSS as our sole provider of water at this point. And so be prepared, here in June, we'll be talking more about that. Also, and we'll talk also in the county council section about voluntary conservation aspects to, to our water supply as we, as we get into the summer months. And last, I know Robert Mayfield is our sanitation director and also over Central Garage, and he's, and just a quick, quick, he's also involved in public works and sanitation tonight. But he's retired after 22 years, I'm going to make a acknowledgement of that, appreciate his effort. He's really been a big asset too, so we wish him the best going forward, so we're going to make that happen. And that's all we have in public works.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments of the city manager related to public works authority? Any questions or comments on the public works authority, or anyone on the council or the city manager? This will be your opportunity under the public works authority. Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public works authority.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes, moving on to the Clinton Industrial Authority. We'll open it up and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. First action item, consider renewal agreement for the Chamber of Commerce, Staffing and Operations Frisco Center. Steve, I'll let you go ahead. So we talked about this.
Yes, we've, we've talked about this, and Julie contacted me today, and I have to apologize to you. I put a copy of what their proposal was, as well as the agreement in your packet, and I'm trying to use her proposal. And you saw the proposal for operations, where it says increase from 42 to 32 extra thousand, 30 extra thousand dollars a year. And then she provided me with the budget, and, and we, she informed me today, we were not quite on the same page, but I was not aware of, they were also wanting to include additional $24,000 for staff. Now, this is a surprise to you, was, and I was not on the same page with her regarding this, I wasn't aware. So what we, tonight, we would ask a couple of different things. Julie's here, we can table this, we can go back and talk a little bit more about this if you have some concerns. I told you it'd be about $43,000 in their savings by the chamber operating the Frisco Center. With our staffing was about 24,000, they wanted, they would like an additional 24,000. That would only bring our savings to about 19,000. It isn't a significant savings to, to operations. I, I don't see the agreement being an issue, just the money. And then surprised to you, if you'd like to table, there's no hurry, we can go back. Or you can approve it with the change in amendment on this, stating also that you understand the $24,000 for, on top of 72 would be for their staffing. But I wanted to be very clear, we were, me and Julie were not, I misunderstood what they were asking for. I didn't see the total amount, so. So there's, there's that. As well, we would, and Don called me today and made a, made a good point, I've talked to Julie about this today, that we would continue to make sure the rates were subject to the city council staff review and determination. We would, and that they would, any adjustments to rates, they would come to the managers or the city council for talking about that in the future. So they would try to adjust rates at the Frisco Center. So we would, we would add that to the amendment. But if you have any concern about the additional 24,000, Julie's here, representing the chamber. Again, it's, it's not quite as, as much savings, it is a savings to the budget. I don't see an issue with it, but if you'd like to table it and discuss or review, or you can, you know, I can move back to where we were offering.
Julie, what's the, what's the additional money? Hiring more staffers, exactly what are you going to do?
Well, we are going to, because we're going to be taking on all the part timers for the Frisco Center. So the, when Steve and I originally met, and I had taken him a budget, and like he said, we had some, this communication there, the 30,000 is to compensate, plus any extra expenditures that we'll have at the Frisco Center. And so for us to pay the part timers, it's, it's $24,000 a year to pay for, to have the part time, part time people there. So since that's part of what the chamber will be taking over, is the part times for the Frisco Center.
That's what we were paying for the part timers.
That's what we're paying our, our part timers for.
Same, same issue.
Realizing it's different, go ahead and ask any questions.
Who, who pays, who pays the part time staffers at this point?
The city.
Today, the city does. July 1st will be the chamber. And that's what was not in the, bringing us on a budget attachment that I didn't realize. So that's what they're asking for. They'd actually, 30,000 additional dollars for operations, as well as 24,000 dollars to cover the staffing they're going to be taking on. So it, it brings the total contract to 96,000 dollars annually, which is a savings of 19,000 dollars over what we would save by moving and making this move.
So we're currently paying 24,000 a year.
Approximately for part time. For part time people.
Okay, I didn't realize what we're doing.
For all the part time help, setting up, phone calls, answering, yes, we have.
Okay, so we're now paying 24,000. What we would be doing would be continuing to pay that.
And just.
We just pay the chamber, we pay that, that to the chambers request, and they would take those employees.
So the original 72,000 dollars total did not include preparations for staffing?
Correct.
Were these part time staffers, that's the old part?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Any other question, council?
But these two full time staffers are included already in the 72, is that right?
The staff there, we have, Julie and her staff, you know, included in that. And our custodian remains as city employee.
Okay.
So let me back, let me, I'm sorry. I know it's, it's, I was confused too, I mean, that's why we, we ended up.
So the full time staff that's, that is current, that we, that is currently at the Frisco Center, not the part time staff, does the city of Clinton pay for that full time staff?
Currently today, we have, we have a director, custodian, those are the two full time staff members.
Right, right.
Starting July 1st, if this agreement's approved, that full time staff member goes away.
Right.
And that's given the duties to the chamber. So that goes away. That's part of the savings we were saving.
Exactly.
I did not know that she also wanted 24,000. I didn't read that in, when I read the agreement, catch that. So I originally thought we'd save 43,000 by the chamber taking over, but actuality, it would be 19,000 if we approve it the way they're asking tonight. And again, if you'd like to go back and, we can, we can table this. I know it's last minute, but she wanted to make sure that she, she got the data, because I was not on the same page with her on that. I did not realize they wanted that additional dollars, so.
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, if you've got part time staff that's going to be turned over to them, if we're inquiring at 24,000, it makes sense, they're going to incur something in the way of, for that expense. I guess I would throw in, the thing that I wanted, the point that I wanted to make when I went through this was, you know, saving 19,000. To me, what appeals to me on this is the streamlining of the management and direction we're going with Frisco Center. We're saving money, that's wonderful, but I think the management and streamlining of who's responsible, who's doing what at Frisco Center is worth money. So the fact that we're saving, realizing this is the last minute change, but I think we're going with this, the overall savings, I like, I like what we're doing.
That's true.
So.
Yeah, I might. Well, I still, you know, I like the concept, you know. It makes a little bit of difference, but, you know, I don't think any of us realize it.
Yeah, and I don't mind, I'm like Steve, if we need to table this, I think we've got until July 1st before this takes effect. So we have another meeting.
No hurry.
Well, go ahead and I'll see if problem with it. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, absolutely.
With this agreement.
Is there a difference to weight?
No, but I just.
With the amendment adding the 24,000 for the part time employees, but, you know, this is only a year agreement. We'll look at it at this time. Next year, we'll see, drive, what this means, make it separate. But I'll make the motion with the, we approve the agreement with this, with the two amendments, the amendment on the 24,000 also, we're envisioning there that the city council, city managers set some fees. That's my motion.
Second.
Trustee Burdo?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Next action item, consider preliminary plot approval on the new housing addition. We've got a couple of issues on this, Steve.
I'll introduce Joe Ridley. We hired him as an engineer to help us come up with this 10 A flat. Sent you the original flat, brought in, and we, he and Joe have been talking back and forth, and he also, on, in front of you, it's also a, a small attachment on your, on your computer here too, Mayor.
Yeah.
Of 40 different lots, a little different size. And Joe, you want to just talk about, kind of hang him up the concept and the other concept? Where do we want to go from here?
Absolutely.
Feedback, council, we're looking for tonight, a little bit.
Yeah, we're, you know, preliminary plat being exactly what it says, it's, it's, it's a work in progress, nothing final. We have some water lines and stuff that are laid out in there, but they're not correct. I mean, they're just, we're just kind of trying to get an idea of what you guys are interested in, what you want, give some comments and feedback. Initially, this plat that you're looking at right now, the whole idea behind that was just trying to keep the infrastructure cost to a minimum. That's, that's kind of the bare minimum, streets, and, and streets are really what ends up costing the most during, when something like this happens. So trying to keep the, the minimum amount of linear peak of street as, as possible and maximize, you know, how many lots you can get with that. So that's kind of why those lots are very deep and very narrow, because obviously we can get by the two streets instead of three there and, and have, have those like that. I submitted, after talking to, to city manager a little bit last week, I submitted another drawing, and I don't know if you guys got a copy of this one or not, call it option B.
Minimize.
Yeah. The one that's a little cleaner up there, if you were just looking at, kind of referred to, is option A. This is option B. It's, it's a pretty crude drawing done at my coffee table in the living room, you know, just trying to get an idea and give you guys an idea of what some other options would be. This is quite a bit cheaper, and these, these numbers are estimates, so just bear with me on, on this. But it's going to be roughly somewhere in the neighborhood of about 125, 130,000 dollars more expensive to do option B than option A, the way it's drawn right now. Could be less than that, but that's, that's a, a guess based on, you know, what I have there. One idea is to maybe reduce the cost by eliminating the street D, which is the street that runs east and west, on the south side of the property, which is at the bottom of the page there. And the way we would do that is we just put a cul-de-sac at the ends of streets A and C. That would eliminate a little bit of street costs that we have. I'm open to other suggestions also, if you guys see something that would fit. In, in my opinion, this option B, even though it's more expensive, I think those lots are, are more attractive, they're going to be easier to build on for a builder, they're going to be able to put several different floor plans on that, you're just going to have a, a respective buyer's going to have a lot more options as far as whether they're going to be able to build on that lot. Option A, it was, it was brought up, if somebody wanted to build a house on one of those lots, and maybe it was a little wider than what would be allowed on those lots, maybe they could buy a lot and a half, or two lots, or go, a builder, if they're going to build a spec, maybe buy three lots and build two houses on them. I don't think you'd be seeing that, that often on option B. You'd probably want lots that might be enough for most, most floor plans that you're looking at, especially for, for spec on, in Clinton right now. That's, you know, like I said, I, it's fairly expensive for me to, to do this. I don't mind. So they have an idea or an option that they would like looked at, I, I don't mind. The only drawback is the time. You guys, everybody probably has in their mind their own deadline as to when they'd like to have this done. And the longer we spend at this phase, it's not going to cost you anything from my standpoint, but it is going to cost in time. So just, just be aware of that. But I don't mind doing that, I want to make sure you guys are comfortable with what you have going forward. So with that, I'll just kind of turn it back over to Steve and, and you guys.
Just a comparative question. I, I'm always trying to get a comparable lot. If we looked at 25th Street, just because it's not what I had in mind originally, how did these lots compare to 25th Street? Does anybody got an idea?
25th Street is odd. They, the lots out there are all different.
Okay. If, if we were looking for something in a mind's eye, what, is there a lot somewhere or a group of houses in Clinton that would be comparable to these?
This is, I think this is a site takers, doesn't that mean a lot of areas?
The new addition, that Saturn, this one?
Yeah.
Those are a little wider and a little deeper.
Okay, but those are big, those were made to carry a little, I mean, they've gotten more flexibility in them. I know they have a bottom side limit to them, but, okay, that answers my question. So basically, a little smaller than, say, Louis Mendoza's lot would be, although this is a corner lot, that's probably not a fair.
We know, I can see that.
It's 90.
Eighty-five.
If we're looking at the second one, it's, most of them are 85 by 95.
They range anywhere from 69.
Okay, there are some.
Yeah, there's some narrower ones.
Oh, right, on the left side, yeah.
Every day. But they range anywhere from 69 to 75, 82 and a half, 75, 75.
Probably comparable to the old site takers, the older section of site takers, would be in the ballpark.
The beginning.
For the different houses out through there, as far as across that spectrum.
Right.
Okay.
Option, option A, those, those lots are going to be noticeably narrow.
Tight.
I mean, they're going to look, at, at the lack of saying something real naked, they're going to look a little odd.
Yeah.
Now, not to say that somebody wouldn't be attracted to having a narrow lot.
Deep lot.
Say you're not going to have much, you're going to have a front door and a double car garage, and that's about all you're going to have exposed to the, to the front of the house, and maybe a couple of windows at the most, you're not, you're not going to have a real nice wide room for a big front porter or anything like that.
When I was a kid, needed, you could jump from house to house to house, basically.
Yeah, and not only that, but the lot's going to be, I mean, the house is going to look pretty small from the street. Now, you can, you can build a really big house, but it's going to have to be deep.
Deep, yes. Like Bob mentioned, that's more of a bungalow style.
Yeah.
This ought to have a little more flexibility.
So how many less lots do we have?
Well, there's three less lots with option A than option B, but a substantial increase in cost. And, you know, when we start laying the lift station in there, and the water, the sewer, and all that stuff, you know, we could be off a lot. You know, just, you know, one lot, we might have 39, or we might have 41, by the time we get everything kind of thrown in there. But like I said, this is real perimeter, that they're, they should be directionally correct as far as the number of, of lots. Three or four less lots with option A than option B.
So what would the price of a lot go up if we go to the water? I mean, roughly, do you have an idea at all?
Yeah, it's about $3,000 more.
You know, which makes a lot cost a lot.
Well, it's how you break it down here. I mean, we have a deal.
How you're going to price it, if you're going to price them where you recover all your cash.
What is 3,000 when you're looking at, I don't know what size these houses would be, but I'm going to say anywhere from, what, 1,600 to 2,000 square feet maybe? So if you, if you figure 3,000 dollars over that, you're not looking at a huge price increase.
Pretty manageable number in my, in my mind if I were building a house.
Yeah.
Jason, you have a question?
I would, I would like to see the cul-de-sacs, as we visited before, the cul-de-sacs put on the end of A, B, and C. Just see what the, what the cost differential would be compared to where we're at right now, eliminating part of street D, since the asphalt and curbing are, are significant payoffs on that are our significant cost.
Okay.
We're going to lose some houses, aren't we, in that process?
Well, you know, I, I don't know, I, you know, looking at, it's real hard to tell whenever, and it's hard for me to do freehand cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
And get the lots to lay out and get all the dimensions, I'll have my craftsmen do that, which isn't that big of a deal. If that's the direction we wanna go, we'll have him put something together that's, that's close, that's not, not perfect, maybe, and get it back to you guys' reviews. There's a chance we could actually gain a lot or two by putting the cul-de-sacs in because we're, we're gonna be doing away with quite a bit of area from those streets. So, you know, we're probably looking at maybe two hundred linear foot of street that we're gonna eliminate. So we might add a lot or two.
How long it gonna take you to put that in and get it back?
It depends on, I contract out my drafting and so it depends on what his workload is. I don't expect it would take, when you're next meeting, June fifth. There's a good chance I could have by then, I mean, I would, I would expect to have by then.
I agree with that, and I'd like to see the cul-de-sac. And Travis, don't mention the problem, that looks good.
And I would, I would also suggest that you and Steve get together a- after that and come up with, like we talked about before, maybe there's some items that we can do in-house and get, get a little bit more firm number on where we're at for that particular design. So I think that, that size of lot is something that I think aren't we all kind of agree upon?
Yeah.
And maybe get a little firmer number of what it'll cost to go ahead and develop that particular plan.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we'll try it, I mean, I don't know if we can have it all by June fifth, but we have at least something to look at. And if you like that, we can move right into cost estimates that are a little more sure of what I can.
Some point, it becomes something you need to do at a coffee table, you gotta get paid for it.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine. Guys, I, I am, I'm used to going through this to the redon before we get with the, with the.
We appreciate your help.
That's fine, that's not a problem.
Any other questions from council related to this? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this?
Can I just comment on one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
He was saying, is that one lot, did you say that one lot was sixty-nine by eighty-five?
Yes.
On the far, far left.
That doesn't meet our minimums for footage. Our minimum is six thousand.
It's sixty-nine by eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven.
It's just bare.
They just bare it.
I checked, I told them, I told them six thousand, we had to be six thousand.
No, I checked them all.
Okay.
And, and I, I tried to, I mean, there's a variance in there just because I know everybody doesn't want the exact same lot. And so we, we, I tried to give the lots that have utilities in the back maybe a little deeper and sometimes in that case a little narrower. And then the ones that didn't have utilities, maybe they were a little shorter and a little wider, so we kinda have a, that's, that's why those numbers kinda jump around. Everything's not kinda symmetrical, just so you guys know. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Joe, we appreciate it, that's. It's exciting. Any other questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Thank you, Ron. If not, we'll take a look at this and come back to it in the, hopefully the next meeting, we'll be in good shape with that. Third action item, consider supplemental budget for Clint Industrial Authorities follow along and we'll skip straight to Deborah.
This one is due to the fire department construction project, that we needed to do this. We borrowed the funds from Oklahoma State Trust and are running those through the industrial authority. They needed to be through one of our trust authorities to do that loan. This one actually budgets what we believe we're gonna spend before June thirty of this year with loan proceeds being the revenue source.
Questions or comments from anyone in the council? Questions or comments related to this supplemental appropriation from anyone in the audience? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation for Clinton Industrial Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marcy.
Yes.
Trustee Hublin.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff.
Yes.
And Chair.
Yes.
City manager's report for the industrial authority?
None in this one.
Audience participation, and when the audience have a question relating to the industrial authority, this will be your opportunity to ask a question under the industrial authority. As I said, we will have a question and answer session under the city for general. Not seeing anyone, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting of the Clinton Industrial Authority.
So moved.
Trustee Hublin?
Yes.
Trustee Marcy?
Yes.
Trustee Rodoff?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes, and Chair.
Yes. Moving on to the regular meeting of the Clinton City Council, we'll open up the meeting, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith, yes. Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. And I'll add to that, just for those that are here, if there's ever a change to the consent agenda, councilmen and councilwomen have an opportunity to always let us know and change that. I just, for ease of working our way through it, I just go ahead and ask for approval, there's always that opportunity. First action item, consider election of two trustees to the Oklahoma State Insurance Group, easy for me to say. Steve?
Well, council, you can see in the packet, there's a few different names for you to choose from, so.
One of us is.
Yeah.
Well, there's only two on the list from Western Omaha. I think it makes a little sample.
Yeah. Pretty good drive.
I maybe we vote for Steve, you and Patty should like.
Second.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith, yes. Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, like those two names, that's, that's exciting. Moving on, we will look at the second action item, consider requests for street closing parades and permit waivers in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. We've done this for a while now, as people put their information in so we can approve it as a poll. And they just work with the, and additions, Steve, you wanna go through any of this?
Well, council, I had Ron put a memo to me, which was passed on to you, just all the requests, which you get yearly. We don't have the issues that we've seen, so we wouldn't have the issue recommended, your request.
Any questions or comments, three pages of these, there are several different functions and different things going on. All the way from Route sixty-six festival, hot dogs and hot rods. Any questions or comments from the council relating to these street closings and approvals? Any questions or comments related to these street closings and permit waivers? Yes, sir.
Oh, is this, are you planning on putting this on the computer as you discussed in the budget meeting? Be real handy for me if I knew when something special was coming up.
I'll have you work directly with Chuck, he'll get that information from Arnold, so you'll have that soon as possible.
And there he is, I think you probably can bounce over and look at our agenda, you'll find the same list there also. Under the council agenda for the city, so it'll get a couple of places, but that's definitely the place to go. Entertain a motion to approve the street closing parades, permitting waivers, if there are no other questions from the audience. Not seeing any.
Second.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Consider approval of progress payment number two to Colony Construction for renovation of the police station. And pretty exciting, I drive by that dumpster every day and look at it and it's.
How are they doing?
Uh, doing very well. Typically, council, you wouldn't see a progress payment, you'd see the consent agenda, but this is mid-month and architects delayed a little bit, they wanna have a few questions for Colony. But progress is moving quickly, we're trying to, we've got a couple of rooms completed. We've got some furniture that'll be in pretty quick here on the first phase. So we encourage you, if you have any time tonight or even, you know, any time, stop by, I'd cheap give you a tour. But yeah, they're doing a very good job, very pleased with the contractor. And we're really making progress. Yeah, this is a thirty-eight thousand dollar request, progress payment, and the architects have approved it and staff has an issue with it.
Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to this request for payment? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the progress payment number two to Colony Construction for the renovation of the police station.
So moved.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Next action item, request implementation of a voluntary conservation procedure for landscape irrigation, referencing ordinance nine thirty-five. Steve, go ahead and let us through that.
Council, we are, we are here again, and I think this is something we're, I think, extremely, unfortunately, used to. With Clinton Lake wrapping up some repairs from the chemical leak, we are taking all we can from Foss. And we, we reached a point last week where we had taken as much as we can. Now, that's not, the Foss doesn't have water, it's just that, to be very simple, the meter we have, we're taking all we can. Now, we, we're asking for voluntary action. If we can ask people to be conservative, water odd, even times, water from seven P M, nine A M, and try to limit their watering to one hour, then, and try to eliminate runoff. I mean, there's, you'll see a lot of runoff that's wasted, please try to eliminate that, be careful. We can manage this summer, we'll be fine if we work on our well projects to supplement Clinton Lake. We will have to bring Clinton Lake online here to supplement our peak time, but we wanna try to get to June, try to get it as far as we can. So if we get some voluntary conservation and, and going back to ordinance nine thirty-five, which are spelled out, we can get through this and we really appreciate the community working with us and understanding our situation. We don't wanna affect our businesses, our issue really comes in landscape irrigation. And people need to water to keep things alive, but they do not need to waste. And we ask them, please, to be conservative. And I just want you to be aware, we're asking that, and if you approve that, it'd be a good message to our community.
Questions or comments from the council, we've been through this before, I know it's at the front of all of our minds.
Yeah, we're beating it to death.
Does agricultural crops, does that mean gardens?
Yeah, gardens.
Is that permissible or?
Yeah, you can, yeah, and again, if you're trying to establish new sod, there's, as you can see, there's limitations or, there's actually provisions for you to water a little bit more to try to get sod established for your crops. But if we can get good voluntary conservation, we have managed Foss throughout the winter, throughout the early spring, late last fall, we can get through this. People have got to understand, don't have to drown your lawn, keep it green, these little rains will help a lot and we'll get through this.
You know, we're gonna put something in the water bales coming up?
Yes.
Also?
Yes. We'll get you, we'll do a press release and we'll get that out there. We're getting good, good feedback from our local press and they're helping us and people are aware, well, they're using our first, you know, notification. We're letting people know when we get to a serious point, so when we got great, as soon as we did that, usage dropped way down, so people are understanding, so.
That press release or something, can we also put up like at the library and public places where we have people that go and visit and just anything?
Yeah, I wonder if we can, gotta get that.
I move we implement voluntary water regulation.
A second. Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
And Mayor.
I have a question. Our, the last few days have been, except that last day of raining, I've been relatively cool. How much water are we taking like today or yesterday?
We're taking approximately about thirteen hundred and fifty gallons a minute. The day he spoke about last week, I believe, was Wednesday or Thursday, eighteen hundred and seventy gallons a minute is the most we can take from the Foss pump. We were taking eighteen hundred and seventy gallons a minute and the water tower was still dropping. When that message went out, that evening, we had to turn the pump back. And it's been, of course, it's cool or it rained, but I think everybody's doing the part, it's really helped, we sent the message out last week.
At the risk of being stoned to death, we finally got rain in Clinton Lake, or a little rain, right?
One inch rain, but no runoff.
Washing the ground in front of a barn, so it was open, maybe it's a runoff of the lake. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from council related to this? Moving on. Supplemental budget for the general fund, capital improvement fund, fourth scent, all these underneath that particular umbrella once and, once again.
And the majority of these are the sales tax related issues where we do the transfers out to Public Works Authority in the back end. That lodging tax we have to, is voted on by, if voted on by citizens, by people. It is received into the general fund, but transferred to the industrial authority or operation of the Frisco Center. So as those would come in higher than we estimated, those transfer outs need to be adjusted up for the appropriation side, the expenditure side, the transfer outside. So that's what those are. I did throw in the youth programs and some of the expenses we have on youth programs out of ACME. They started some new programs this year that we didn't budget for in the process of the budget. They were new programs that were just generated this year and so the revenues that we've brought in, I wanted to appropriate those revenues to offset the cost of running those programs, which are like operating supplies and things that she uses and they use out of the facility and the extra help that they hired to do those programs. But they've been pretty successful out there. So that's the general fund. Capital improvements, the same way, it's the sales taxed in and out, as those sales taxes are coming higher. ACME, the ACME Park Fund is since we implemented the sales tax again after the last vote. This is to fund the debt, we receive it in a special revenue fund, transfer it over to the Public Works Authority for the debt service. So it's the same type of situation. The sales tax that's dedicated to the PD Fire Department Construction, we receive as a special revenue into a special revenue fund. We are doing the police department portion of that construction project since we're funding it with sales tax as it comes in. We are doing that project in this fund, the expenditure side of it. Once that project is paid for, the police department is paid for it, then the sales tax that continues to be collected will be going to the fire department debt service as that happens, because we did borrow the money to do the fire department side of it. So that is to take care of that sales tax. And then the central garage is an internal service fund. We just have a little bit of higher excess vehicle repairs on some of our trucks, I believe, and it was not quite appropriated by enough in that line item. And we do have the money coming in from, all the other funds within the city pay the central garage to do the repairs. So they're coming in from other sources within the city to that money to pay those repairs. That's what all those are.
Everybody here is sitting thinking, I'm glad I don't do accounting.
Oh, my gosh.
Says me, me, I'm just glad I don't do your accounting, so. We appreciate that, thank you, Deborah, for those overviews. Any questions or comments related to these supplemental budgets for these different funds? I'd always like changing budgets when it's to recognize more incumbents, we can do that all, all year long. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience related to these supplemental budgets? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the supplemental budgets for these particular funds.
Councilwoman Smith, yes. Councilman Marcy? Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
City manager's report for the city.
Council, one, one item tonight, we would request a special meeting for early next week, Monday or Tuesday, real quick to do some housekeeping. It's actually an emergency item. With, we've mentioned to you, we had, last meeting, we had a, a valve issue at the wastewater treatment facility. We need to have that, we'll be getting quotes, we need to have that done quickly in the emergency phase, we're getting quotes right now. We would ask if Monday or Tuesday would be appropriate, it could be at noon, it could be five, whenever you want to meet. We'll have those quotes so you can approve the, that's out of our ability in-house to do that, so we have an emergency issue. So probably estimated somewhere around ninety thousand dollars for these repairs, they need to be done quickly. We need you to approve that. Are we available on one of those days?
Are we gone? Are we gone, we'll be back on next Thursday, will you be here? Phil's?
I'm new Tuesday.
Okay.
Tuesday's fine, I should do it. Move on Tuesday.
You have any work for Tuesday?
That's fine.
Okay.
New Tuesday.
Okay, move on. Lisa, we'll post that meeting for noon Tuesday, it will be quick, and we'll show you those quotes and we'll get that item fixed.
Be right here.
Be right here.
Anything else, Steve?
Really, that's it. Never mentioned it, our programs at ACME, we're trying to continue to improve that. I'm real pleased with the after-school program, we need to do a summer program in conjunction, working with the summer playground, so. We've got some real good activities, the pool will be open, obviously, so it doesn't need things happening. And I wanna make it very clear that we fill the pool early, so, didn't see the water issues and, and the small supplemental water, you know, again, that's part of timing. We'll utilize the right time to fill the pool, but we, we're trying to forecast and be proactive and we fill the pool early to minimize the water situation there, so. But we wanna have it for our kids and, well, there's things we need to have this summer, so.
When's the pool open?
Monday weekend.
Monday, as usual?
As usual.
Two questions, two questions, one, what is your timeframe on the dock installation?
What are you guys thinking? Have it done late this week.
Next week, babe. They're coming in Tuesday, it'll be installed by Wednesday evening. And the walk-in drill will be within a week after that, so it'll be complete.
And we have a fishing derby June third, I believe. No, Bradals?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Ground Father's Day.
Father's Day. Wow. A little out there.
I appreciate that, guys. Second thing I was gonna ask you, and with my feeble mind, I may have lost it, the excitement of being excited about that. Oh, you're, you, we had funded in our next budget a review of ACME. Well, how long do you think that review will take? Do you have any idea at this time?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I just, I know what the cost was and I, you know, the scope's still a bit, I don't like the scope. And I would hope we would be able to wrap it up within ninety days, so we'd have the cost and the plan, and we can maybe phase it through, but I'm not sure at this point.
That's fine, that's a good answer, too. Okay, any questions for the city manager from the council? Any questions or comments related to anything in the city? This is your opportunity for any question you have of the council or the city manager. Not seeing any, oh, got one.
I'm sorry, is this open? Are you saying it's open now?
Yeah, any questions you have, if you have a question for any part of the city, this is it.
I just wanted to say that I'm the gardener for the city of Clinton, I want to introduce myself. And this is probably the wrong time, but I do have a plan and if anybody's interested, I'd be glad to talk to them.
Okay. Well, normally, it's stuff like that goes through the city manager, but we're always, we're always interested, so if, at any time, I appreciate the offer. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting of the Clinton City Council.
So moved.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Smith, yes. Councilman Marcy?
Yes.
Councilman Rodoff?
Yes.
Councilman Hublin?
Yes.
Yes.